Okay. Regular meeting of the successor agency is called to order. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please? As soon as you see it.
Agency members Ramirez.
Here.
Rios.
Here.
Vice Chair Perez.
Here.
And Chair Ayella.
Here. There are two consent items or consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Who's taking the second? Sorry, before.
Margarita.
Thank you. Agency members Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez.
Aye.
And Chair Ayella.
Aye.
Do we have an executive director's report?
Chair Ayella, there aren't any tonight. Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
Not for the successor agency.
For this portion of the meeting?
Not for this. No.
All right. We're adjourned. Okay, now we're going to call it to order the regular meeting of Norwalk City Council. This evening, we're honored to welcome Pastor Samuel Kim, Senior Pastor of Covenant Mission Church here in Norwalk. Pastor Kim has deep roots in our community and serves Norwalk residents through leadership and youth development. Pastor Sam has spent over 20 years in pastoral mission work across international and youth ministry. In his spare time, he coaches varsity tennis and partners with his wife to mentor students at our local Lakeside Middle School. We're grateful to have him with us this evening. And this evening, we're going to have Vice Mayor Jennifer Perez do the flag salute. Okay Pastor, you're on.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today, grateful for the opportunity to gather as servants of this community. We ask for your wisdom to guide every decision, your clarity to shape every decision, and your unity to bring cooperation among all who lead. Bless our council members, staff, and citizens present here tonight. Grant them discernment, patience, and a spirit of fairness. May every choice made in this chamber promote the well-being, safety, and flourishing of our city. Grant wisdom to our council members as they discuss matters that affect the lives of families, children, and every resident of this community. May your truth shape every decision. May your peace govern every heart in this room. Help us to listen well, speak with grace, and act with integrity. Holy Spirit, give clarity of thought, unity of purpose, and humility of heart. Let every word spoken here honor you and reflect your character. May this meeting be marked with respect, humility, and a shared desire to serve the common good. We ask for your protection over our city, our families, and all who work to keep our community strong. In Jesus' wonderful name, we pray. Amen.
All right, could you all please face the flag, hand over your heart, and let's join together. Fudge allegiance.
The flag. United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
This is gonna fall.
Yeah, they keep falling.
Okay, is everyone ready? You ready? One, two, three. And let's do one more, please. Ready, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
You too. You too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Council members Ramirez.
Here.
Rios.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Here.
Mayor Ayella.
Here. Close session report.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, the record should reflect the City Council with the four members that are present tonight being present in the closed session and prior to recessing into closed session, the items that were listed on the agenda were announced for discussion for closed session. The City Council received a briefing on those two items. There was no action that was taken or nothing that needs to be reported by the, at this time, by the City Attorney's Report. And before we move on to City Council comments, as indicated, we do only have four members tonight, and we do have a series of public hearings. However, there is one matter of significance, item number 13, which is the consideration of Resolution Number 25-54, upholding an appeal denying the Planning Commission's decision to adopt the Recirculated Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigated Monitoring and Reporting Plan and Approval of Precise Development Plan Number 2023-06 at 14830 Carmine River Road. A Resolution Number 25-63, upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve the identified documents. This matter was heard at your last City Council meeting. However, in light of the fact that we will only have four council members tonight, and because of the significance and nature of the potential legal issues that may be facing this decision, it is being recommended by my office and staff that tonight's public hearing be opened at this time for the purposes of continuing the item, item number 13, to the City Council Meeting of January 20th, 2026. That tonight, anyone who is requested to speak on this item will be requested to return on January 20th, 2026 for their testimony at that time. Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing and entertain a motion to continue the matter, item 13, to January 20th, 2026.
Okay, Ms. DeWoyd, please provide the noticing report.
Thank you, Mayor. Notice of the public hearing was mailed to 59 property owners within a 500-foot radius of the subject's site. It was also posted on the city's official website and our three sites throughout the city on November 20th and published on November 21st in the city's adjudicated newspaper. As of this evening, we had received one communication from Creed LA in support of the appeal.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to continue to January 20th, 2026. Mr. Mayor?
A second.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Council members Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayella.
Aye.
And so therefore, Mr. Mayor and Council, item number 13, this is an announcement to the public. The item, as previously announced, will be continued tonight for a public hearing and for all testimony to be received at that time through January 20th, 2026 without further notice or further notice as required. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving into City Council comments. Councilmember Ramirez.
No comments this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rios.
Oh, oh. Wait a few seconds for the room to clear. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our council meeting this evening on December 2nd, 2025. Just a couple of things I'd like to share. On November 26th, I participated in our Community Thanksgiving Lunch that was held here in our sports complex, and it was open to the entire community for free. That was done in collaboration with LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn, Assembly Member Blanca Pacheco, as well as Senator Barbara Chuleta, and the Mujeres Extraordinarias organization here from our community. So was really heartwarming to have families come and partake in a free Thanksgiving lunch that day, as well as there were several baskets, Thanksgiving baskets, that were raffled off. And it was just really nice to start my Thanksgiving week that way. Also, on November 29th, we had our kickoff for Shop Local by the Norwalk Business Chamber. And so I'd just like to just remind everyone, while you do your shopping this holiday season, that you remember to shop here in our beautiful city of Norwalk so that we can help support our businesses thrive and hopefully have a really positive holiday season here for our business members, small family-owned mom and pop, as well as our larger businesses. And just want to wish everyone a safe, healthy holiday season. We are in the middle of holiday season. How quickly this year has gone by, as well as Thanksgiving. We're done with that, and we're on to our other upcoming holidays. So I just want to wish everyone a very safe, healthy, happy, joyful holiday, and I hope that we all remember to just be kind, respectful, show compassion. If you can, give back. If you're blessed, remember to bless others. And let's continue the work that we're doing here in the city of Norwalk to stay connected and work in unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita. Vice Mayor Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to give a huge shout out to our entire team that served Thanksgiving dinner at our senior center this past week. While I was not there, I want you to know I was there in spirit. It's one of my favorite events. But I'm learning that I have to take some time for myself and my family at the same time. So Gabby, please, all the volunteers, everybody was there. I know we had several of our Norwalk team there with their families. Mayor, everybody, it's I'm so happy that we're continuing that tradition. I want to thank Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco. I participated in her turkey giveaway on Tuesday last week. We had a great event in the city of Downey. I do not know how many turkeys I picked up and put into cars, but I am so proud to say that we had so many of our Norwalk residents there volunteering at the same time. It was definitely a great, great two hours. I'm not going to lie, my arms were a little sore from picking up those turkeys. Goes to show you, I need to spend some more time in the gym. But we are now in December, and things are all green, gold, and red, happiness all around here in the city of Norwalk. Our Norwalk now is out. It's coming to a residential address or business near you. We have several of our events that are happening in the city over the holidays, kicking off with our tree lighting this coming Saturday, and it's at the Norwalk Arts and Sports Complex. So please go online, read the Norwalk Now, check out all of our social media posts for great events that are happening. I'm sure there's a dance somewhere. There's got to be a dance somewhere. Somebody's going to be dancing, but we have lots to be grateful for here in the city of Norwalk. And our Norwalk Senior Center Bulletin is out with all of the great activities that are happening at the senior center and at our Social Services Center. So please make sure you take a bulletin and get some great information. And our Santa sleigh kicks off next week after we light our tree. I want to give a huge shout out to the Norwalk Santa sleigh float foundation, Lisa Vernola Salas, and the entire family for really continuing the tradition and really wanting to be a part always of the city of Norwalk. So anybody that is volunteering for the Santa float, going out, taking Santa to all of the various places in the city of Norwalk, find a schedule on RecNorwalk, whether it's on social media, Facebook, Instagram, our websites. You know what schools they're going to, what times, what days. Make sure you have a great time and capture those memories. And finally, I just want to thank all of our residents that are putting up holiday decorations and participating and bringing joy and cheer and memories to our city. I know we have our home decorating contest that has started. So if you want to be part of that, make sure you sign up. It's really, really a great time to see all of the smiles and the great cheer going around here in the city of Norwalk. So enjoy the month of December to all of our residents and businesses. And here we go. It's upon us, and we got, what? Third, like 29 days left in 2025. So go make a memory and enjoy your family. That's all, Mayor.
Thanks, Jen. City Manager comment?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, I'd like to start out by just saying happy holidays to all of our residents, all of those here who are present. I want to also let you know that we will be having lots of events. So I want to thank the staff before all of those events happen, but we are a busy, busy crowd here during the holidays. And beautiful, beautiful events that are upon us starting this Saturday. The other item that I wanted to report on is the, just as I've done in the past several meetings, want to give an update on the immigration activity here in the city. And we are happy to announce that we continue to have presentations by organizations who assist our residents. And CHIDLA has agreed to present here in Norwalk, and we had a presentation on November 25th, and we had 20 attendees. The upcoming presentation is December 9th at the senior center. And so we continue to provide these resources and bring in organizations that are specializing on immigration issues. Since November 18th, also, last City Council meeting, Social Services has assisted 92 families through the Emergency Food Pantry Program, and we continue to replenish that so that it is available for our residents. We also have logs of services that we provide. We had three referrals to legal aid. We had social services that handled six other families. And so we continue to provide resources on a daily basis and provide as much information that is available. We also continue to provide the Know Your Rights red cards. We have those available and readily give those out to our residents, visitors, to our Social Services and Senior Center. Next, we'd like to be able to provide a brief park master plan update for you, the council and the residents, just to give you an update as to where we're at with our parks throughout the city. And specifically, today, we'll also focus on Hermosillo Park since that park has been, has begun the mobilization for construction of a new park. So with that, just want to, we'll have Mr. Alan Perdomo present. Just want to let the community know that all in all, the project is approximately $52 million. The majority of it is grant money that we were able to apply for. We were able to seek to be able to fund the project. So these are monies that come from outside of the city resources, which is always what we try and do. We try and leverage the opportunities that the state, the county, and other agencies have so that we don't have to spend our city money, but more grant money. So this is one of these examples where most of the $52 million is from other sources that we were able to receive. So with that, we'll have Mr. Alan Perdomo present.
Thank you, Asus. Good evening, Mayor, and everyone in attendance. So today, I will be presenting an update on the park master plan. It has been some times as I presented it once, I'm very excited to kind of do a looking back on some of the things that we've done and then looking forward. Next slide. So some of the projects we completed from 2023 to 2025 are the following. I think if everyone can recall, we have successfully implemented a Wi-Fi in all of our 12 parks and also our surveillance camera system. I'm sorry, I apologize, in all of our 12 parks, except Bob White, which we're working on that, and I'll get to that in a little bit. But we have implemented that. It's called Park Connect, and that's a free complimentary Wi-Fi to anyone that attends our parks. Secondly, at Robert White Park, we added a couple of amenities. The first one being Norwalk's first dog park, which is very exciting, and hopefully you've been out there. We've been doing a lot of different activities. We just did a Paws and Claws event a couple of weeks ago. We had a great turnout. We also did a new playground, and we installed a modular restroom in that park. Next off, we have Gertie's Park. This is home to our adaptive recreation program, something that is very dear to the City Council, and we went ahead and installed new floors, a fresh paint, and some sand panels. Some of our adaptive recreation participants are sensitive to sound, so the sound panels really help them kind of navigate as we do sort of different programs in that building. Playgrounds, we also have we also have four new playgrounds that we installed over the last year and a half at Vista Verde Park, New River, Robert White Park, and Holyfield Park. We also went ahead and installed Pour in Place. Pour in Place is kind of that rubbery cushion jumping kind of surface that you see in the playgrounds. We went ahead and did that improvement at Gertie's Park, Glacier, Lakeside, and Ramona Park. The reason we didn't replace those playgrounds, because they're still in pretty good condition, but we wanted to improve the surface. Snack bar renovations. This is home to a lot of our community-based youth sports organizations use these snack bars for sales. We went ahead and did some improvements, completely brand-new snack bars at Gertie's Park, Lakeside, and Silverman Park. We installed a couple of pergolas at Gertie's, New River, and Vista Verde. And one thing that we did that I wanted to kind of create a grassroots kind of marketing is we actually installed these well-dead signs that are in front of your screen, and they're all 12 of our parks, and we rotate the banners every month. So as you walk through the parks, let's say you're not a big fan on social media, it's kind of grassroots marketing. And we also have a QR code which takes you to our social media, our webpage where you can sign up for pages, and also to our free complimentary Wi-Fi service that's offered at our park. Then with the current park projects in progress are the following. So as you know, sustainability is a very important issue to the City Council, and we have been improving the ball field lighting in a lot of our parks. Thus far, we have completed a total of six field renovations with LED lighting. And I do have some good news. I just found out that on January 12th of next year, we begin Ramona Park. That's exciting. And then hopefully, within a couple of weeks after that, we're just waiting for one more permit to go through, we'll be able to start Lakeside. That'll be two baseball diamonds with lighting available to the community, which would really expand our ability to program, offer more programs and more playing time. Next up is our solar arrays. We're almost there. We're almost at the finish line. If anyone's been to Norwalk Arts and Sports Complex, you see those beautiful solar arrays. They're great at energy. Hopefully, they'll save money. But then, secondly, the parking lot is not very bright. So if you see it, it really is a security issue. So I'm very happy that if you go there, you see the brightness. So that's a project we're close to completion in about a month or two. One thing that I'm very excited about is two master plans we're going to be beginning early next year, and that is for Holyfield Park to try to incorporate the 15 acres that the city owns into Holyfield and see what other improvements we can do. And then, secondly, Robert White Park. I mentioned there was one park that didn't have Wi-Fi or cameras, and that's Robert White Park because it doesn't have electricity. So we're going to improve the irrigation, the block wall, the media curbs, and also just improve electrical so we can connect the cameras and the Wi-Fi system. Norwalk Park Master Plan. So last, this past summer, we actually held a master plan community engagement meetings at Norwalk Park, and there's a picture of all the different community members that came out holding the plan that they kind of, you know, painted in their image. And we were able to successfully apply for a grant called the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant that is administered through the National Park Service. I'm very happy to report that they actually flew to Norwalk about a month ago and did a side visit with me. And I just got an email from them about a week ago that they want another update. So I think we're kind of riding in the right direction. So keep our fingers crossed, and they should make an announcement in January. But we're one of the finalists, so that's very exciting. That will be about $6 million to improve and redo Norwalk Park. And here's some of the pictures from that community engagement that we had. This took place on June 25th. And here's a picture of the master plan. One thing, if you notice, there's a lot of green. So there's a lot of urban forestry that we're going to incorporate. It's a couple pickup ball courts, another dog park, and connecting the east and west parking lots of the Norwalk Park to enhance the parking lot. Now I want to focus on Hermosillo. You know, I want to go back a little bit and kind of provide some context kind of where we started. So some of the project history, we decided in 2019 to hold community engagement meetings because Prop 68 was available for cities to apply for. And one of the requirements was to have multiple community engagement meetings to document them and to basically build the park based on those community engagement results. So we had those meetings. We also created an informational My Future Park tent that we have put in different events to promote the plan and the project. And we have also presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, the City Council, on this project over the last year and a half. And there's a picture of Sanchez Elementary in 2019 where we hold some of the community engagement meetings. Like I said, we started with six community engagement meetings to gather input from the community for the park, and we held some of those meetings at Hermosillo Park, Sanchez Elementary, Social Services Department. We went ahead and canvassed the neighborhood, the school, and the local community center. And that's one picture that actually took place inside the community center at Hermosillo Park, and you can see everyone was gathering around, giving input, and everyone had a chance to draw their concepts. Over the last two years, we went ahead and built this, and I'm sure everyone's seen it. It's like a very large tennis. It says My Future Park. And we have promoted this tent at 35 different events to outreach to the community, to let the city and our residents know that this park is coming. As you can see, there's a picture there in our 2024 Summer Concert Series where you can see the concept of the playground and everything. We're kind of educating, getting people's feedback on that. So you know, we did Halloween Parade to meet the mayor, summer concerts, Front Street, Independence Day, just to name a few of some of the outreach events that we we had our My Future Park tent at. At that tent, you know, we provided a project overview, a timeline of the project. We had conceptual designs. We kind of created like a, we even did like a fake turf so it looks like a park within the tent with some plants and so forth. And we even kind of, we placed this foosball, which was actually a major attraction at this tent. And then we also have allowed the opportunity to sign up for future updates through our QR code. And this is one of the events that we had with, I think at that point, Councilmember Rios, it was the mayor at Hermosillo Park. Again, just some more community outreach that we did at Independence Day at Holyfield Park on your left and at our Sports Expo that we did earlier this year. So I want to show this is the current concept that aligns with the current funding sources that we have. That's been approved. And one thing I want to mention, there's kind of an L shape there, placed there. And currently, that is left vacant because we, this is the current project that we're starting. But one thing I want to show at the next rendering is this is the next phase of the project. So the other one is sort of the actual funding source contract, and this is the next step. So we're currently waiting for some middles from pending grant opportunities. Or secondly, we're going to be going to the budget cycle at the mid-year, and we're going to be going to the City Council to adjust our budget or at the mid-year for funding in the 25, I'm sorry, 26, 27 fiscal year budget. One thing I want to mention, if you can go back, Maudie, on this slide, the current contract is roughly $51,400,000. The current update that will include a full basketball court, a half basketball court, and six handball courts brings it close to $53 million. So if, one thing I want to mention that currently, there's only one basketball court. So if, one thing I want to mention that currently there's only one basketball court at Hermosillo and four handball courts. This actually adds two more handballs and adds an additional half court that will be completed and added to the project the day we open the park back to the community in spring of 2028. Do you have some contact information? If anyone's available, feel free to take a snapshot of that. I think I'm talking faster than I can think. Thank you. So again, there's some contact information, there's general park information. You can email our recreation or norwalkca.gov email, and we will reply normally within 24 hours to any inquiries. We also have a dedicated hotline that you can call 24 hours. You can leave a message, and then we call you back, and we can answer multiple languages, so English and Spanish, which are predominantly the two languages in Norwalk. We also created a dedicated email, so myfuturepark@norwalkca.gov. You can email that, and we'll get back to you within 24 hours or related questions just on Hermosillo. And I think, you know, I just want to buy the community, the city council. We do have community open house meetings that we're going to host every other month, beginning on January 21st of 2026 at 6:30 PM at Sanchez Elementary. That'll be every other month, and we're going to have the design team, myself, public services, the recreation team, and as the project progresses, we're going to be able to show video footage, photos, and then most importantly, talk about some of the programs that we plan to program in the park once we open the park. So we're very excited to start building that program already and then provide that information to the community. And that's all. Thank you. Forgot one more thing. We do have a video that we did produce to kind of highlight the project. If maybe the city clerk can help us play that.
Hermosillo Park is beginning a new chapter, one shaped by fresh ideas and meaningful progress since the first concepts were imagined in 2019. In 2019, the city asked residents what they needed from their neighborhood park. Through workshops and conversations, the community shared its priorities. The first renderings reflected those ideas, but they were only a starting point. Over the next several years, the city continued to meet with residents. Each meeting informed attendees about how the future of Hermosillo Park will benefit the community. As the conversations evolved, so did the design and pandemic inflation costs. Some features were scaled to fit funding requirements, and several shifted to better match community needs. What you see today is the product of multiple rounds of feedback, cost evaluations, and collaborative decision-making. The approved plan now includes two synthetic soccer fields with lighting, a new community building with indoor event rooms, a small outdoor amphitheater, a walking trail, a playground, and improved shade and lighting throughout the park. A modern stormwater system under the fields will help manage rainwater more effectively. And the vision doesn't stop there. The next phase aims to install new basketball and handball courts. The city is proud to have secured major support and funding that includes Proposition 68, Measure A through the regional park and open space district, and Measure W water quality grants. This brings state, county, and regional partner support into this upgrade. During construction, Hermosillo Park City programs will move to nearby Holyfield Park, ensuring uninterrupted recreation services for families. Groundbreaking begins December 2025. Construction will take about two and a half years, with reopening expected in winter 2027 to 2028. Hermosillo Park's next chapter is a community-built vision, a safer, more responsive, and more welcoming park for the generations ahead. Follow myfuturepark.org for updates.
So that was a brief presentation about our master plan for parks. Next, we have the Lions Club Check Donation Presentation.
Mr. Gomez, do we want to, there's people that want to speak on that item. Before we get to the Lions Club Check Donation, I'd like to go there first.
Sure.
All right. First speaker is Virginia Alvarado.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Alvarado, and I am part of the community around Hermosillo Park. I am very, we've met before at the groundbreaking ceremony, and honestly, I've never heard anything in regards to meetings or anybody canvass out in regards to meetings for the new park. Upgrade is amazing. We all like upgrades, but when you're taking it from a community park and making it a city park, that's where it affects the community, and that's where we're coming together. My child is not a soccer enthusiast, yet there's no longer going to be a basketball court for him to go and play, a grass area for him to go and throw a ball, a play area, which I think that's where we really need to focus as well for a little bit of older kids versus three, four-year-olds. My 10-year-old cannot play on a 42-inch slide. He needs something bigger. We need something to bring our kids to this community and have them fit, something kind of like what you guys did at Holyfield. That's fine. Give them a zip line, give them something bigger, something better that's going to bring our kids. I've never seen anybody go out and canvas. I never, nobody ever came and knocked on my door to say, hey, this is what we're planning on doing. I had to hear it from somebody else. So for me, kudos to whoever decided to put in the police substation there as part of a safety community. That's fine. And if taking away handball courts and basketball courts because you think that that's going to solve crime around that area, it's not going to happen. So we need something more for our kids, more for our community there. That's what we're asking for. Soccer is not our thing. Now, our community park is now becoming a City of Norwalk fundraiser. That's what's going to happen there. Rental of the facilities, rental of this, rental of that. We need more something for the community, something so that Sanchez Elementary kids can go to right after school, play, and have a good time. Not something where they're just going to sit around and kind of twirl their fingers because there's things there that they're not interested in. So I'm hoping you guys kind of help us out and give us a real part for our community and not just for the city of Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Viveros, please.
Good evening. Who were on the first planning committee. I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of my parents, Dennis and Sally Viveros, who were on the first planning committee back in 1978. My mom did ask me to speak on it and to remind the city of Norwalk that Ralph Nottingham did give the land to the neighborhood for the kids, for the children, for they can have somewhere to play and belong to. And I just want to bring it up that I'm a fifth-generation 162nd Street Norwalk resident. I have my grandparents, my parents, myself. I have my children, and I have my grandchildren. And we live right across the street from the park where my dad bought my mom her first house. So I'm in that house on 162nd. And raising my grandkids there, love my little community, my little city there that I have with my neighbors that I've known forever. And we all agree that this should be kept to the neighborhood, to the residents that are there, that it was meant to go to. I prefer Holyfield Park for bigger soccer area. You've got all that oil land over there, but that's not my plan. But I do have a question, what you plan on doing with the bronze plaque that has my parents' name on it, all the committee from 1978? If you can keep it in mind, to not destroy it, but to maybe pass it on or get hold of me. But either way, thank you for your time. Thank you for your committee. Thank you for your upgrading on our park. That meant so much. I lived next to it when it was a cow pasture. The park now is an upgrade, and a new one is going to even be better. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Maria, Maria Sanchez, please.
I'm speaking for her. Hi, my name is Patty Delgado, and I too attended the meeting where I first met Mr. Perdomo. I went in there, and the first thing I noticed was the amenities to our park gone. Okay? And thank you, Mr. Perdomo, for that story that was given to you right, to us right now. Because that's not what was relayed to us at that day. We were told that the project, there was no more funding for the handball courts and the basketball courts. Again, our family's been there when that was a cow pasture. I'm too young to remember, but my older sister's here, and she played there. Here's the thing. The day before, I didn't know about this. I received a text from my sister who lives in La Habra Heights now. Said, you know what's going on? No. I canvassed the neighborhood, asked about 50 to 60 people. Nobody knew. Nobody knew what was going on. So I took the initiative to show up to that meeting. I seen what was going on. I expressed my concerns, and that's what, all we, all we received was it's not in the funding no longer. Okay? Our community is a lower-income community. With our kids, are high at risk. That's the first thing I pointed out to him, you know? It's very, it's vital for our kids to have a selection of sports, especially when they're young in our community, to keep them active. Hey, that particular night, you were there. I didn't know who you were because you didn't engage the community either. But as I walked away, I tapped you on the shoulder. I said, look at those 15 kids playing on the basketball court. What are they going to do? Your reply was, don't care. That was your reply. I said, okay, well, I'll see you again. So I took it upon myself to do research, right? I know that Ralph Nottingham gave this land. I reached out to the Nottingham family, which currently reside in Orange County, that there is support. I've contacted, emailed you people. Nobody replied. So I had a canvas during Thanksgiving holiday. Almost every door I knocked, I would say 90% of the community did not know about this. 10% heard rumors about something. So, so what's, it's very disappointing because this always happens to South Norwalk. This always happens to this community. It does. There's no funding. I reached out to, I researched how we were getting the funds. I reached out to Prop 68. I reached out to Prop 7. I have like my time and my aunt's time. They're also residents here. I reached out to them.
You said, I'm sorry, you said, yeah, whose time?
Oh, Maria Sanchez and Patty Delgado. We spoke.
Can you repeat the name one more time for him?
Patricia, Maria Sanchez was who you called up. I'm Patty Delgado, and then Valdelia Delgado, my mom. They speak Spanish.
Do we, do we have cards?
Yes.
You're Patty?
I'm Patty.
Okay, and you, you spoke for Maria?
Maria Sanchez.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Your time will start now for the second.
So I researched, reached out to Prop 68, and they emailed me back and told me that 8.5 was allocated for this, for specific handball courts, basketball courts, new plaza, handball courts. They also informed me that after the grant agreement, there was to be no reallocating of funds. So my question this morning, I met with all of them, is like, which I, after we spoke, I was told that there would be something now, that there would be the courts, there would be a handball court. But at the time, it wasn't. So the funding for it is, was allocated for that. You know? It's, it's, I emailed everybody, so did my sister. We, so when you say we have a number there to reach out, we were reaching out. And again, I have 300 signatures on my change.org petition, that's legal for our community, and 180 when I went door-to-door knocking, asking people if they knew what was going on. Nobody knew what was going on. I'm not sure who attended those meetings because it sure wasn't the residents of Norwalk. We've been there since 1971. All these family here are, been here for 30, 40, 50 years. So we can walk up to people and ask them, hey, do you know this? Did you know? Nobody knew what was going on. Nobody made an effort or to engage the community properly. I'm not sure where, where those 35 meetings were held or who was contacted, but like I told them this morning when I met with them, I said, it would have only taken two banners to hang up at the park. Said, hey, this is what we're planning to do. Another thing is that at your original meeting, your proposal, it included a splash pad. It included the handball courts and included the, all the amenities that are being taken away. And yet, at the last minute, at the 11th hour, this other proposal was presented, which was, we don't have funding. Six days before, seven days, a week and a half before groundbreaking? It's, it was just not right. I, I, there's just different ways of engaging a community, and none of them were taken properly, and I can vouch for that. I could vouch for that because I went door-to-door.
Are you Bee Delgado as well?
Yes. I am.
Okay.
So as she mentioned, another, Ralph Nottingham donated the land for our neighborhood and to our, for the children of the neighborhood. So there's different avenues, and it was, it was just very upsetting that nobody took the time to contact us when we did become aware of the situation and let us seek counsel and see what avenues we could pursue. So I'm glad that Mr. Perdomo is now trying to engage. But I mean, there's a fence up at Nottingham, Brendan Nottingham. We still call it Nottingham. You know, I know we get is a proposal or a concept of a plan. We need more than just an intent or a concept, which they, it seems to be on the plan now, but I don't know. We don't know who to trust, what to believe anymore. Today, you know, it's there. It was there yesterday, it was there, it's there today, it could be gone tomorrow. You know? I think more of an effort needs to be made to engage the communities affected, and this, this would be a negative impact to our youth that are already high-risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have, looks like Yvonne Mayorga?
Good evening. My name's Yvonne Mayorga, and I'm a sixth-generation resident here in the city of Norwalk. I grew up on 161st Street next to Hermosillo Park, living with my grandparents. My other grandma also lived in the neighborhood on Chesterton, and I'm also a homeowner here in Norwalk. When I heard about the plans to tear down the basketball courts, the handball courts, When I heard about the plans to tear down the basketball courts, the handball courts, and the kiddie pool, I felt sad and upset. Flood of memories came back to me, memories growing up at Hermosillo and how much that place meant to me. From the age of 10, the park became my escape from chaos happening at my home. It was my safe place for so many years. I remember playing at the game tables, playing board games. I remember making crafts with the recreational staff. I remember my late friend, Richard Franco, who was always at the park, teaching me how to play handball, and I loved playing there. And on hot summer days, I spent hours in the kiddie pool, because we didn't have an AC at home, just one fan, and sometime my mom would take the blanket and the pillows, and we'd be out there underneath the trees at the park, just to cool down. So Hermosillo Park doesn't just sit in the neighborhood. It belongs to the neighborhood. It holds decades of memories for people like me who grew up there and families who still rely on the park. For example, when I went on Saturday, there was an elderly resident playing racquetball and other residents walking around, and I asked them if they had heard about what was going on with the park and how their, you know, the plans for the park. And they had said they had heard rumors, but nothing had ever been concrete and told, you know, that it was gonna happen. It's happening. But I'm letting you know that these amenities are crucial to the neighborhood, most importantly, the youth. So I had no idea about, you know, about the basketball courts. I mean, you guys are saying that now, but my issue was basketball courts, handball courts, a kiddie pool, and also the field that's not artificial grass. That's regular grass where fathers, mothers, and kids can play catch with their children, and they don't require special shoes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marissa, Marissa Contreras?
I live also on 162nd Street, just three houses down from the park. My parents are the homeowners. My great-great-grandmother lived in that home, and my great-grandparents also helped build that park. Their names are also on the plaque of the community center, and I feel it is my duty to fight for a park that my ancestors' hands and dreams helped build. As someone who walks that park every day, I see how many people in our neighborhood appreciate the beauty Hermosillo Park offers. Folks of all ages use this space to be in community and improve their physical health as well as connect with nature. The trees there are home to many different types of wildlife, including but not limited to hummingbirds, hawks, and squirrels. Losing this piece of natural habitat would negatively impact our ecosystem as well as the mental and physical health of the Norwalk residents. I also attended the meeting on Wednesday that Patty and the other speakers before me talked about, where our city manager, Alan, and Run Rat, as well as the engineers. And it is true that a lot of these plans that are being introduced now were just said straight-out no to our faces. So it is really hard to believe the marketing of cleaner air, cleaner water for our community when unfortunately, we know in these days and ages, when something is marketed that way in low-income areas, it's often just a red flag for gentrification and exploitation. I don't see how this park is gonna be making anything better for our community if it's tearing down every single tree and planting artificial turf that we're not gonna be able to even use if we did want to, which we don't. It is, there are better ways to come to a compromise, like the others were saying. I know Patty, yeah, started the petition, and I've been talking to people since I attended the meeting a few Wednesdays ago, and it doesn't sound like this is what anybody wants. So we do deserve transparency and honesty through this process. We're hoping that you guys will work with us and come to a park that the residents will actually use and actually appreciate. It's clear that everyone here really cares so deeply for this space, and it means a lot to our community. Thank you.
Anthony Taboris?
As a business owner, resident, ex-gang member, and my family's been here since the 50s, I'm the last one in Norwalk, that park meant a lot to us. I know you guys do your thing, your job, I understand. I know the kickbacks. I run a business. I know the meetings that takes behind closed doors. I get the four councilmen's not to fit, or you guys don't make the decision right away. I get that part. But you know what? They mentioned that this park belongs to us. Removing certain things is not gonna stop crime. Let's just face that. The South Side always gets denied. Things always gonna happen. But regardless of the matter, we all gotta come together. We've been in the news. Rios, you've been blasted up left and right. I feel for you, you know? Norwalk is just known for bad news. That's all they wanna throw out there. They never throw the good things about the events or the parades or what Vernola did or whatnot, you know? Now we're sitting here, we're finally, we're taking up our time to come over here and to try to protest for this park. This park means a lot to us, to our barrio. That's a barrio park, lower minority, right across the street from Sanchez. Have you guys ever done the study on Sanchez? One of the lowest-scoring grade schools that we have in Southern California. That should tell you something. That should tell you that all of us need to step up and put our games and put our heads together to make a better difference in our barrio. See, when I was a gang member, we took pride on the activities. Now we gotta take pride on our barrio, because that barrio belongs to us, all of us, whether you're a cop, public safety, pastor, city council. We all gotta come in agreement. Now, I understand the meetings and the grants and all that, it's all good. That's your guys' department. All I'm just saying is, be open for us. Understand where we're coming from. The Norwalk-Lamora School District already got some monopolizing the soccer fields. Let them have it. All the people that come to the soccer games, they're not from here. They're not from here. They take up all of our parking. They're not from our city. I live right across the street. I live in the barrio, so I'm not telling no lies. Just be open. Let's keep some more handball courts. Let's get a water park like the way Carson did it. I got ahold of one of the contractors. They said 52 million is too much. It should've been around 25 to 30 million dollars. So let's all take it into consideration. Come together and make an agreement so our, so our community could grow, so our next generation, my kids, your grandkids. What they say, fifth generation? Let's go for another five generations. Thank you, guys.
Think I get it right? Thank you. That's all the speaker card says, Sues. You wanna go back to your comments?
Great. Thank you for all that input. The next item will be the Lions Club check donation presentation.
I brought the troops with me and do this alone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Rick Ramirez. I'm the current president of the Norwalk Lions Club for the year 2025 to 2026. Come over here, behind me. Yeah, come on. That's later photo op. As you know, Norwalk Lions Club has been around for many, many years, and I believe it is the largest active social nonprofit organization that Norwalk has. We're really engaged in the community, and we put all our efforts right back in the community. I'm happy to report to you that tonight is a very special night for us. Based on all our fundraising efforts throughout the year, as the community may or may not know, we give 100% of our fundraising proceeds right back to Norwalk community in various forms through scholarships and different programs. So I'm happy to report tonight that we're gonna be giving out $2,000 in contributions to various city programs. I don't know how we'd like to maybe do it all at once or one at a time, so let's do one at a time. First, I'd like to present a check. But before that, these are the members of the club. We have our vice president. We have long-term lifelong members of the club, and I'm happy that you guys were able to come out of your busy schedules to host these presentations. So first, we like to give $1,000 to the Hope Team. We know that the Hope Team is vital to our community in assisting our homeless or unhoused population, and I know that they put a lot of time, energy, and effort out in the community. So this, hopefully, this $1,000 goes towards their efforts in making their job easier. I know, because it's tough out there. So the only thing that we ask is that you report to us on how the funds were being used. I know in previous years, we donated to the Teen Alliance, and we helped feed the teens during the Fourth of July. So that was very informative for us to know so that we can continue to do what we do and give back. So tonight, first, we have a representative from the Hope Team would be Rita. And those Hope Team members out here? All right, so we'll go take picture of the check? The next, the next check we're gonna be presenting it would be to the Public Safety Cadet Program. We know how important that is, how we educate our up-and-coming members of our community that may want to pursue law enforcement. If they don't, they are providing great service to our community by being active and involved. So $500 to the Public Safety Cadet Program.
Okay, we're 12 by yours. Thanks. Hi, Peter.
Okay, ready? All right, one, two, three. All right, let's do one more, please. Ready? One, two, three. All right, thank you. Thank you.
We know how important that is, how we educate our up-and-coming members of our community that may want to pursue law enforcement. If they don't, they are providing great service to our community by being active and involved. So $500 to the Public Safety Cadet Program.
Alliance, the TAP program. And I guess Rosie would be that team lead.
All right, is there more? I have two. Yeah, there you go. Nice. Thank you. Okay, ready? All right, one, two, three. And let's do one more, please. One, two, three. All right, perfect. Thank you.
I think that's good.
So in closing, I'd just like to thank the members of the Norwalk Lions Club for coming out, and we're looking forward to our continued partnership with the city of Norwalk in providing funds to various organizations and programs. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, the Lions Club, and to you, Rick. Congratulations for being president. I know the Lions Club has a long history of supporting Norwalk programs. I can remember, it goes back as far as the 1980s, and every year, they're pitching in to assist with different youth programs and just about anything that could be helpful to the city or the community. So once again, thanks, Lions Club. Thank you, Rick. Yeah, we can do a round of applause for that one. Hey, Sues, back to you.
Yes, thank you very much. Mayor members of the city council. The last item is the bi-weekly review video. For those who couldn't attend the events, know what the activities are, and hopefully they'll join us here during the holidays. So with that, we can play the video.
On November 18th, the Social Services Center hosted an Autumn Arts and Thankful Crafts event. Families got creative, building colorful turkeys with craft paper and pine cones. The Recreation and Park Services Department hosted an open house meeting at Hermosillo Park on November 19th. The meeting was held to help residents learn more about the upcoming project, share feedback, and get their questions answered about the future of their park. Join us for the groundbreaking ceremony on December 6th.
Okay, we have eight consent items for consideration. We have a speaker for item six out of eight. Brian Tenno come forward.
Good afternoon, evening, whichever it is. A trial now, so forget what time it is. CC six, that's the Firestone Widening Project. I am a fan of it. They're putting in plants that I am a fan of. It's going to be great for the city and increase the amount of traffic flow through that area. I know the money's going to get approved. I'm glad the money's getting approved. Are there any repercussions for contractors who are not accurately bidding projects? So if I offer to paint the council chambers for $5, and then I go, oh crap, I need paint and sprayer and da-da-da-da-da-da, and say, oh, I need $10,000 more dollars, that's what it seems like is happening here. This was approved for $15 million, and they want another 11 or 12, I think. So it's not the 10% contingency that was built into the budgeting. It's 100%. So I was just curious why this was happening and why there was so much more money needing to be allocated for that? And then I should get another three minutes. CC eight is the settlement amount for $250,000 from the city to the state in the settlement case that was brought. The state's mandating $250,000 into an account for housing affordability, I believe. I'm just curious where the money is coming from and why it was chosen to come from this area. A quarter million dollars fixes a lot of potholes. And so if it was come out of the pothole budget, I think that's something that people would like to know. And so I was curious where that money is coming from. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy, I'm not sure if it's V or Andy, you?
I also wanted to address the $250 amount that's being put into the trust fund because that is a lot of money. As, you know, some of the previous comments that we've heard tonight shared, the council struggles a lot with transparency and communication with its residents. It seems like the other residents here weren't aware of the park and the plans. And I'm not aware of where this money is coming from either. $250,000 is a lot of money that can go towards, you know, city services, towards maintenance. And instead, it's going into this trust fund that, you know, the council got us into this legal mess. I think it's also important to think about how this trust fund's going to be used. I know part of the settlement says that, I believe, within 30 days, you have to come up with a plan procedures on how it's going to be used. I really hope that is a transparent process. I hope to hear about that soon because I don't want that money, you know, going into an empty black hole when that could have been spent towards helping the residents and helping us. That's $250,000 that really didn't, you know, it shouldn't have gone to this point. This is a lawsuit that didn't have to happen. And so hopefully, this will be something that the council takes into account when they're looking to, you know, try to go to battle with the state. Because at the end of the day, this is money that is coming out of residents' pockets and that will no longer be used for residents to support them. Thank you.
Hey, council, is there any comments, questions?
There isn't. I'll move the items.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mariella.
Colleagues, do you have any appointments to advisory bodies? Okay. Now it's time for a public hearing to consider ordinance number 25-1764, zoning text amendment number 202503, amending various sections relating to definitions, parking standards, specific uses in commercial and/or manufacturing zones, emergency shelter, and low-barrier navigation centers, R1 zone permitted uses, institutional zone permitted uses, and the land use matrix, and adding sections 17 dot 04 dot 500 relating to mixed-use development. The public hearing is now open. Ms. Boyd, do we have anybody in the audience with anything to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Notice of the public hearing was posted on the city's three official sites and on the website on November 6th. It was also published in the city's adjudicated newspaper on November 7th, and we've received no communications.
Okay, thank you. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Alex Hamilton will introduce our consultant that will do the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Laura Stetson from MIG, who has helped staff craft the ordinance that's before you tonight. So she'll give you an overview and summary of some of the key provisions in that ordinance that, frankly, if it's adopted tonight, will represent a final chapter in this litigation bind between the city and the state HCD. Will also implement some programs to bring us into further compliance with our housing element, programs that were agreed to when the housing element was adopted. So Laura, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for inviting me to speak with you this evening. I have a series of slides that have a lot of information on them. I am not going to read them. There was a staff report that summarized everything fairly nicely. So I'll go through them fairly quickly, and if you have questions, I will be available to answer. And for the record, Laura Stetson from MIG, 401 West A Street in San Diego, California. The ordinance before you this evening covers many topics. These are targeted zoning code amendments, as shown on the slide, to address several changes in the zoning code. And they are in response to, next slide, please. They are in response to several actions. The first being the urgency ordinance that Mr. Hamilton referenced that was adopted by the council in August of last year that put a moratorium on a series of uses that were considered to be possibly detrimental to the community. And included among those was emergency shelters, and that got the attention of the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, next slide, which caused HCD to rescind its certification of the city's housing element. Housing element is the city's eight-year plan to accommodate the housing needs of the community, and it's very important to have a state-certified housing element to qualify for grants and loans for affordable housing, and also to protect the city against possible lawsuits for not having a sufficient general plan. And so in, excuse me, the housing element was decertified in October of last year. In the fall of this year, after negotiations with HCD, there was a stipulated agreement between the city and HCD to address the concerns regarding emergency shelters and also to amend the zoning code to address other programs that the housing element had said needed to be moved forward, but the city just had not had the opportunity to do that yet. So the two things, next slide, please, that this ordinance is addressing are to create standards for specific uses that were listed in the urgency ordinance, to create regulations to address things that are needed to implement the housing element, and then updating some definitions to stay in concert with the other amendments that are proposed this evening. Next slide. There are a series of slides here that show you some of the conditions that are now going to be in the zoning code if this amendment passes to address things like payday loan establishments, laundromats, check cashing establishments, and all of the other things that were in the emergency ordinance. And you'll start to see a theme of some of these conditions that would be put on these new uses that come into the city, including distancing one from another, distancing from schools, distancing from residential neighborhoods, regulations addressing hours of operation, requirements for security, requirements for litter control. So we'll go through these pretty quickly, and I'll just highlight a couple of things. Payday loan establishments are required to be separated from each other and also from schools and for any business that sells alcoholic beverages. Next. Discount stores, and these would be small discount stores, not a big discount store. And these would be the discount stores that you typically see in your neighborhood. They would be required to be separated one, a mile, one from another, and to have fairly strict security requirements. Next. Laundromats, hours of operation, graffiti control, there would be a requirement for an attendant to be on-site whenever the laundromat is open for business. Next. Car washes. And there was concern of a proliferation of car washes and the fact that they take up a lot of space but might not have a particularly benefit to the community in terms of revenue generated if there are a lot of them. They create noise, traffic, et cetera. And so there are provisions to separate car washes from residential neighborhoods, one from another, to have a minimum lot size, and to ensure that they do not operate past 10:00 PM Sunday through Saturday. Convenience stores, the concern was proliferation of convenience stores, particularly those that sold or sell alcoholic beverages. And so in addition to the regulations that you have in your code today, regulating small convenience stores selling alcoholic beverages, there are limitations on their size and the fact that they need to have security. And see some of the other conditions that are here. Next slide. Those were the primary uses that the moratorium addressed. The other requirements that the state indicated need to be addressed is how the city regulates group homes. There are very specific regulations in state law as to how and where group homes can be located and regulated. And there's a division between group homes with six or fewer residents or group homes with seven or more. And so we are putting forward code amendments that reflect what current state law allows. Next. Emergency shelters, this was a topic of concern for the moratorium. There is a new definition or a new type of emergency shelter that state law requires the city address, and these are called low-barrier navigation centers. And so these are centers that aren't just providing shelter, but they are providing assistance to people to find jobs and to transition to more permanent housing. And so the city currently has emergency shelter regulations. The proposed ordinance addresses the concerns that HCD raised and puts limits on where they can be located, but it does comply with state law in terms of how you have to allow emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers. And we can come back to that if you have more specific questions. Next slide. As part of the housing element, the city committed to allowing for mixed-use development, meaning a combination of commercial and residential in commercial zones, C1 and C3, and this was to create additional sites for housing. It doesn't commit the city to build that housing just to create the opportunity. A lot of the C1 and C3 sites in Norwalk are actually addressed by the Heart of Norwalk specific plan, which I think is before you this evening, is another public hearing item. But for those sites that are not within the heart of Norwalk, this code amendment establishes regulations for mixed-use development in the C1 and C3 zones. And again, because of what state law says you have to do in terms of allowing for mixed use, the code amendments respond to that, but also have some fairly strict requirements as to how these have to be designed and look and operate in the community to avoid any impacts and not to overwhelm the commercial districts as well. As part of the housing element, the city also committed to looking at its development regulations for parking and to address the concerns that were raised, that the city's parking requirements for single-family zoning, meaning in the R1 zone, be loosened somewhat. The city's response is to allow for tandem parking in a very limited application, both in single-family zones and not so much in your multifamily zones, the R2, R3, and R4. And in all cases, the tandem parking has to be assigned to a unit so that if people are sharing that, they can take turns parking in front or back. It's not like you have to jockey with your neighbor. It has to be assigned to a unit, and it can't be used for guest parking. Next slide. This planning commission held a hearing on November 12th to consider this item and voted five to zero to recommend that the city council adopt all of these zoning text amendments. Next. The zoning text amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, so there does not need to be any finding made for that. And these all comply with the general plan, and in the case of the ones that are directly related to the housing element, are furthering the programs that are in the housing. Next. With that, city staff recommends that the council approve the ordinance, adopting the text amendments, and also find the project to be exempt from CEQA. I can stay at the microphone if you like, if you have additional questions or sit down and wait for post-public comment.
Council, comments, questions? None? I don't believe we have anybody else that wants to speak on this item, so.
I'll move it.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mariella.
Aye. Item 11, a public hearing to consider ordinance number 25-1763, zoning text amendment number 202502, amend title 17 of the Norwalk municipal code to add lot consolidation incentives to comply with the adopted 2021-2029 housing element. The public hearing is now open. Please provide a noticing report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Notice of the item was posted on the city's three official sites and the website on November 7th. It was also published on the same date in the city's adjudicated newspaper, and we've received no communications.
Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Gabriel will present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the community. The item before you tonight is ordinance number 25-1763, zoning text amendment number The purpose of the zoning text amendment is to amend title 17 of the title 17 of zoning code is to include a new chapter for the law consolidation incentives, which will bring the city into compliance with the adopted housing element update and add a new chapter, 17.04500, to the municipal code. These incentives will be based on a percentage of affordable housing provided for projects, and they will include projects that identified in the housing element update and also combine lots for residential mixed-use projects. Next slide, please. The city's sixth cycle 2021-2029 housing element update listed the law consolidation program as a commitment. The housing element update program listed anticipated timelines for the implementation of such programs, which this was one of those. Next slide, please. The housing element included a housing inventory list of 33 sites, which were identified as lot consolidation sites due to their size and proximity to one another. The purpose of this program was to encourage the combination of smaller parcels to accommodate larger residential and mixed-use development on vacant and underutilized lots. The city would continue to process lot line adjustments administratively. The city would develop incentives such as density bonus, which was adopted in December 2024 and codified in January 2025. The city will also work to provide outreach to developers and promote incentives to encourage development opportunities. Next slide, please. Staff studied various cities with law consolidation programs in the development of this ordinance. The cities that staff studied were Saratoga, San Dimas, Palo Alto, and Concord. The City of Concord's program included a parking reduction, an increase in compact spaces, and assistance with marketing. The San Dimas program included a lot combination code section and a lot merger waiver fee. Saratoga included a 10% units above density, provided the units were affordable, and a 15% units above density for very low-income units. They also increased They also increased and allowed increase in heights, reductions in processing fees, in lieu fees, or utility connection fees. Palo Alto's program included a high prioritization of such projects and a waiver of entitlement Next slide, please. As mentioned in the development of this ordinance and text amendment for the city, staff decided these were the most suitable and appropriate incentives for this program. And again, these are to encourage development and reduce barriers to improve housing opportunities in the city of Norwalk. They expand and list, they expand a list of incentives concessions available to developers. They expand the criteria for development projects that will increase the number of affordable housing units. This text amendment will also ensure consistency with the 2021-2029 housing element update program. And the proposed text amendment will establish a process for approval in conjunction with other entitlement applications regarding and concerning housing projects. Next slide, please. The proposed text amendment will provide an incentive of 10% additional units to projects where two or two to three lots are combined. It would also provide an incentive of 15% of additional units to projects involving the combination of four or more lots when such, when such percentage of units are affordable low income units. Next slide, please. On November 12th, 2025, the planning commission considered and voted five zero to adopt resolution number 25-15 to recommend to the city council approval of zoning text amendment 2025-02 for lot consolidation incentives. Next slide, staff's recommendation. A, staff recommends that the city council introduce by title only ordinance number 25-1763 in ordinance of the city of, city council of the city of Norwalk, California, amending title 17 zoning of the Norwalk municipal code to add law consolidation incentives and comply with the adopted 2021-2029 housing element. And B, considering and find that the project is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act equal guidelines pursuant to section 15061b3. And I can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have significant effect on the environment. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay, is there anybody wishing to speak on item 11? Okay, council, have any questions, comments?
Move it.
Roll call, please.
Council members Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mariela.
Aye.
Item 12, a public hearing to consider resolution number 25-58, final environmental impact report, state clearinghouse number 2024040140, resolution number 25-59, general plan amendment number 2025-02, resolution number 25-60, general plan amendment number 2025-03, ordinance number 25-1765, zone change number 2025-02, ordinance number 25-1766, zoning text amendment number 2025-04, to establish specific plant area number 18, the heart of Norwalk specific plan. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Boy, do I have a noticing report, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the notice was mailed to 16 property owners and it was also posted on the city's official site and on, I'm sorry, on November 6th and it was published on November 7th in the city's adjudicated newspaper. We've received no communications.
Do I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Carlos will present tonight and also consultants are here to also make the presentation. I just want to make a, a comment that this has been in the plans for probably two years or more and we are here at the final stages of approval before you for consideration of this specific plan, the heart of Norwalk. So with that, Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, staff is proud to present to city council the Heart of Norwalk specific plan. As you know, this plan has been in years in the making with the visioning plan started in 2020 that helped develop the specific plan you see in front of you tonight. Staff notes that on November 12th, 2025, the planning commission held a public hearing for review and consideration of the Heart of Norwalk specific plan and recommended city council to approve with a four zero vote. Before we dive into the details of the specific plan, staff would like to highlight that as directed by both the planning commission and city council, property owner meetings were conducted. These meetings took place. This, this meetings took place in August 7, September 18, and September 25, 2025. Two districts were presented per meeting in order to conduct a more focused approach on each of these areas. A total of 31 property owners attended these meetings. To promote these meetings, staff sent out 228 customized flyers to each property owner via certified mail. Overall, the comments received during these meetings were positive, though some concerns were raised about truck routes and existing land uses that may become legal non-conforming. The staff also clarified that the city is not acquiring any land as part of this process and is not currently undertaking any projects on the sites within the project area. These property owner meetings were in addition to the multiple public outreach events conducted throughout the project. Our consultant will be going over a brief summary of these outreach events. For tonight's presentation, our consultant Phil Burns with the Arroyo Group will be providing you with a summary of the plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Phil to start his presentation.
Carlos, Mayor Ayala, Vice Mayor Perez, council members, tonight, before you with just a brief presentation. But before I do that, I just want to say, and I think you all know, that this has been a really wonderful, wonderful project, collaboration with you all, with city staff, and most importantly, with the community of Norwalk. Truly, this has been one of the most meaningful projects of my career and it's been a wonder, it's been a pleasure to work on it to this point. So the process is summarized here on this slide, as Carlos mentioned, the vision plan leading to the specific plan and beyond the property owner meetings, which were recently held, really a robust number of community engagement efforts, including engagement through digital tools by thousands of Norwalk residents. This, the plan, as you're aware, consists of three main districts and three main corridors that connect those districts. The Front Street Historic District, a revitalized historic Main Street and Entertainment District, the Town Square District, an iconic shopping district with public plaza, the Triangle District, a walkable urban living district connected by the Firestone Corridor as a signature green boulevard, the San Antonio Corridor backbone connection connecting those, those districts with this civic center and the future walk development, and then the Railway Corridor as a recreational trail. And the specific plan has already in, really garnered a significant amount of interest from property owners in the area and developers. And here on this slide, you see some of those sites which we reviewed at our last study session, showing interest, you know, showing developments which, to which there has been interest expressed or other catalytic developments that we would anticipate within the early years of the plan's implementation. The total build out of the specific plan over a 30-year period is estimated at 3,007, 3,087 units, contributing to the city's arena of about 5,000 units and 173,000 new square feet of commercial uses. So I do want to highlight a couple of the changes to the specific plan from the last time that we were here with you. So the first and most important is related to residential parking requirements. We did have a discussion about parking requirements, which in the earlier draft were set at one space per unit, which was really ideal for promoting the ability of developers to be able to build multifamily developments on smaller pieces of property. However, at the recommendation of planning commission and, and others, we did adjust that to two spaces per unit, which, you know, heard is kind of more in keeping with the expectations of the community related to onsite parking. So that is the new parking ratio. Height limits were increased in some areas, not a lot, but in some areas, as you can kind of see there with that example of the building, in order to be able to accommodate potentially multiple levels of parking, which might be required with a two space per unit requirement. Another area of changes was related to the plant palette. So we'd like to thank members of the public for their, their detailed and very interested comments related to plant selection and promoting native plant species. And so we did make several changes relating to the plant palette. We removed several grasses and ground covers that are identified as invasive. We refined the tree planting master plan and added more information related to experiential performance and vision and added water use classification to the plant list tables, ensuring that really all the plants that we're recommending within this, within this, along the streets within the heart of Norwalk area are low water use plants that are suitable for our climate. The plant palette was slightly, was, was modified as well to reinforce the look, the feel, the urban design characteristic, the comfort that we want people to feel on our streets, you know, particularly on Firestone, San Antonio, Pioneer, major streets within the area, so that it really complements the overall urban design. Finally, there were a few relatively minor land use refinements as well to specific parcels and areas within the specific plan area. So just put that up there and I'd be happy to, you know, answer questions about any of those specifically, should you have questions. Finally, I do want to go over, I do want to clarify a few things in the plan related to the, the implementation of streetscape improvements. As Carlos mentioned, there have been concerns raised by some existing business owners as to how the planned streetscape improvements will affect the, will affect the ability of existing businesses to operate freely. And so, you know, just as a kind of reminder and example, Firestone Boulevard, you know, this is the existing, how it looks, and this is the vision for, for the corridor. Now, when the plan is adopted, really what you will have happen is just developers will have, developers will have the responsibility to upgrade the sidewalks to the plan standards in as much as the, as the city would like to require them to do so. However, that middle part, you know, all of that in the red there is the city responsibility and changes to that portion of the, of the right of way would only happen when you have all of these other steps happening, right? Being part of the CIP, city budgeting for that, or submitting grant applications. It would only happen, you know, for longer parts of the corridor with sufficient community engagement, with engineering design as well. And so what that means is that the change from two lanes in each direction and some, on some streets to one lane in each direction would only happen at your, you know, when you so indicate and after a robust process. The, the, the things that go into, that go into effect with the adoption of the plan will not address that central area of the right of way. So finally, just mention that even when those are implemented, nothing prohibits the city from, I mean, you know, trucks will always be able to use those streets and nothing prohibits the city from keeping truck routes along those streets as well. The designs that are there, that are in the plan, which are only conceptual, are meant also to accommodate large scale fire trucks and other large vehicles, so they should be able to continue accommodating trucks as well. So I think that's all of my, my presentation for now. If staff doesn't have anything to add on that, I will hand it over to Jessica to speak
Mayor Perez, can you hear me? Okay, great. My name is Jessica Kirchner. I'm with Impact Sciences and we prepared the EIR for the project. So just a quick overview, I'm going to talk a little bit about the EIR process, some of the findings, and then just kind of summarize next step. So Phil already went over most of the project information, so I don't really need to go through the objectives and the location, so I'm going to just move along. So in terms of the CEQA process, the draft EIR, the CEQA process was initiated with the release of the NOP and that was in April of 2024. That signaled the 30-day comment period, the scoping period. April 23rd of 2024, there was a scoping hearing. And then the draft EIR was released in June of this year, June 23rd to August 8th of this year. It was circulated for public review and then the final EIR was prepared on October 31st and that was released to the public. So in terms of the findings, there were two areas where there were significant and unavoidable impacts. Those two areas were air quality and those related to construction air quality and operational air quality, as well as emissions related to impacts on sensitive receptors and then noise, which were also construction-related impacts. In terms of areas that were found to be less than significant but required mitigation, historical resources, that's primarily the built environment, and then archaeological, paleontological, tribal resources, those are buried resources, hazards, which is issues related to contaminated soils, and then construction vibration related to building damage. So after the draft EIR was released, we did receive comments on the draft EIR. We received three comments in total. One was from Caltrans. Caltrans requested some additional information related to the project, specifically related to intersections in the project area. The city and Caltrans coordinated on that and that issue was resolved. We provided information in the final EIR. Additionally, Los Angeles sanitation district submitted a letter identifying information related to program EIR and how individual projects would proceed for, as they were developed underneath the plan. And then one private person commented as well, and that was specifically on the plan and not on the environmental analysis. So I'll turn it back over to Carlos.
Thank you, Phil and Jessica. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council of the city of Norwalk adopt the resolutions and ordinance associated with the proposed Heart of Norwalk specific plan as shown on this slide. That concludes staff's presentation and staff and the consultants are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have one speaker card on this item, Brian Tindall.
I just wanted to say thank you to the developers for listening to public comment and making compromises and thank you for listening, just raising my voice. So thank you very much.
Council, questions, comments? If not, is there a motion?
I do have a few comments.
I do have a few comments, Mayor. Thank you, except for my, my mic is, I mean, having a great time tonight. I just want to thank staff and the team for noticing that this is a vision plan. So there currently, there may be some smaller projects that are going on within the area, but ultimately, this is a vision of what we are looking forward to in the City of Norwalk. I love that we, we highlighted the fact that we did start this during the pandemic. Many of the initial community engagement meetings were all held over Zoom with a lot of residents, which was great. So thank you for that. And my other two comments, I know, I appreciate you guys having the additional community meetings with the business owners and property owners in some of those very specific areas. I just want to make note that some of those business owners have owned businesses, those businesses, in the City of Norwalk for decades. And not only do they, they own the business that they might have, you know, it, it looks like 13 people showed up, but those 13 people may own five actual buildings, five different addresses. So sometimes the 13 may actually quadruple because they own multiple businesses on that particular area.
Especially Firestone.
Yes. And I, I really like that we spoke about Firestone today, specifically in the truck route and the traffic. And again, highlighting that this is a plan, nothing is changing right now. Zoning-wise, changing from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction. As things develop and come forward, the city has the opportunity to review that and make changes to. I know we've done this, this change from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction in some other streets in the city, and those are different types of streets than what Firestone Boulevard is. And I think that's what we really need to pay attention to, and I'm glad that we highlighted it and recognized that this is, this is a concept, and it's a vision, but it's not necessarily happening right now. And should it come up and a change be made, an entire report and plan will be presented to the City Council with traffic studies, truck routes, conversations with Caltrans, et cetera. And so I do appreciate that we highlighted that because I want to make known that nothing is being changed on Firestone Boulevard, truck routes, et cetera, right now. Again, this, this has been a journey that we have all been on together. You guys have been very open to hearing from our residents, whether it was in the beginning or the last time that it was presented here in council. And for that, I think we have a plan that we can move forward and also know that it's a living, breathing document that'll continue to change as things change here in the City of Norwalk. So thank you for the presentation and the information. Again, I'm hoping we see a lot of these changes much sooner than, you know, 15 to 30 years, like we had talked about a couple of meetings ago. But I'm grateful that we have something in writing to move forward and really bring forward to our city. Thank you.
Yeah, Margarita.
Yeah, actually, we started with 50 years, and I think we brought it down to 30, so we're doing better. We're doing, we're doing better, and we're going to continue pushing that number to make it even less, so that we see these results in our vision a lot sooner. But I, I just wanted to add a little bit to what our Vice Mayor mentioned as far as, you know, when we talk about concept and we talk about vision, one of the things that I do, I have to acknowledge in, in the work that, not just the City Council as, as the leadership here, you know, my colleagues and I for this great city we live in, but also in collaboration with our staff, you know, we, there's always room for improvement, okay? But I will say that we go above and beyond to engage our community. We really do. There are so many different avenues of information that is available to our community, through paper, through electronic, through visual, and when I say visual, watching our City Council meetings. There's just so much opportunity. So for anyone here and anyone listening, please take me up on, on this opportunity to learn more about what is happening in the City of Norwalk and what our vision is, you know, as was shared today during these reports and these, these presentations. You know, this is just a glimpse of what we have going on in our city. And so I really hope that our community takes me up on this request to get engaged. No excuses. There's, if there's a will, there's a way, and Norwalk is making the way. We, and we are asking our community to come on board with us. We can't do this without our community. We recognize that. Our community input is critical. It's crucial to even getting to our, our presentation with our heart of Norwalk. I mean, we, we know that, we recognize that. We're very transparent, we're very open in this process, and we just wish more of our community would take, take us up on getting involved, learn more, but you have to do your part. You have to be willing to come, listen, engage, contribute, participate. It's available to every single person, resident, individual, man, woman, and child, youth in this city. So I, I really hope that as we continue this process, as we continue to hear more reports, as our staff collaborates with, you know, all of the people of the City of Norwalk, that we see more participation, because it's not slowing down. If anything, it's picking up. So please, stay engaged, pay attention, make an effort to learn and hear what's going on in the City of Norwalk, so that you feel heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita. If there's no comments, more comments or questions, is there a motion a second? Have we got a motion a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me see. Yeah, that's right. We have, Item 13 was continued, in case there's anybody still here for Item 13. I don't believe there is, but. So, Item 14, Resolution Number 25-61, Budget Resolution, Project Number 7246, Traffic Signal Synchronization Program, Approval of Cooperative Agreement for Implementation of Norwalk Boulevard, San Antonio Drive, and Pioneer Boulevard Traffic Signal Synchronization Program, Engineers Report Numbers 25 through 23. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, we have the team, Mr. Ron Chen and Mario Mera, that will be presenting.
Thank you, Hazeus. Good evening, Mayor and.
Good evening.
Members of City Council. The last item before you tonight is the Traffic Signal Synchronization Program, and out of respect for your time, I'm going to only touch on the highlights and most crucial information that I'm reading off the slide. So the TSSP is a County of Los Angeles program consisting of signal synchronization to various intersections, including intersections within the limits of the City of Norwalk. Over here, you see, I know it's really small, I'm sorry for that, but it is a rather large project. The intersection, there are a total of 49 intersections, starting as far north as the City of Whittier, making its way through Santa Fe Springs, parts of unincorporated LA County, City of Norwalk, Artesia, Hawaiian Gardens, and Lakewood. Within the City of Norwalk, there is a total of 16 intersections. What we have before you tonight is the Resolution for Budget Amendment to allocate funding for the city's share of this project, but also the, the overall scheme of this program that the county is delivering to synchronize these intersections, it has a total cost of $4.037 million, of which the portions, the intersections within the City of Norwalk estimate to cost $1.687 million. Of that amount, Metro, in collaboration with LA County, will be funding $1 million. The county will kick in $398,600 of that, and the City of Norwalk is being requested to fund $281,700. Oh, I forgot to mention, it is primary along the corridor of San Antonio, Pioneer Boulevard. So with that, I would like to read off the staff's recommendation that City Council adopt Resolution 25-61, Resolution of the City Council Authorizing an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2025-26, Adopt a Budget to Appropriate Funds for Traffic Signal Synchronization Program, Project Number 7246, and approve the Cooperative Agreement with the County of Los Angeles Regarding the Implementation of the County's Traffic Signal Synchronization Program in the Amount of $281,700, and authorize the City Manager to execute the Cooperative Agreement and any amendments on behalf of the city in a form approved by the city attorney. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak on Item 14? If not, Council, is there any comments, questions?
Move it.
Motion a second, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Item 15, January 2026 meeting schedule, staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, 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 good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council.
I got hold ahead of yourself.
Tonight before you, we have a request, proposal, consideration for the January City Council meetings, and I'll start by saying that in December, we will be having three City Council meetings, and so we wanted to present to you, present to you a schedule for January. We, we believe as staff that maybe just having one meeting in January, which would be the 20th, 20th City Council meeting, as one meeting in, in January. If needed, we would maybe, if we, if there's something that is needed that we could look at January 13th, but as we look at our schedule ahead of us, we think that one meeting in January would be sufficient, and, and taking into consideration the holidays and New Year's and people, staff being on vacations, on vacation and being able to have enough time for staff reports. So before you, we'd like to have you consider having one meeting in January.
Councils, comments, questions?
I move for one meeting.
Got motion, second, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez, Rios, Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Ayala.
Aye. And that moves us into oral communications. First speaker is Brian Tindall. Karen Spillsbury, Member of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to come up and say a few words. It's been a busy month in November, especially ending with Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, Cyber Monday, and Today Giving Tuesday. But especially, I want to talk about Small Business Saturday. First, I'd like to start by thanking Mary Ayala for coming by the chamber, taking things out to the community, putting posters up in businesses, and encouraging the attendees to shop small and local in Norwalk. When you shop small, you keep the community thriving. It supports quality of life. Small businesses are the backbone of the community. They not only take your money in, they turn around, their employees spend it back in the community. They also donate. They donate to our local groups, to our nonprofits, to our sports teams. Your small businesses are the biggest supporters of local entities. It allows the businesses to hire, which brings more jobs, and it just helps build a stronger community. Learning that $68 out of every 100 stays in your community when you shop local is important, because those dollars help bring sales tax money to the community, which helps fill those potholes, and which helps coordinate those signals, which I'm very happy about. And so I just think it's important for everybody to remember that Small Business Saturday should be more than just Saturday. It should be the entire shopping season. Most small businesses see about 20% of their annual revenue come in during this shopping season. So to help keep the doors open of those businesses and to help support our community, we want to encourage everybody to continue to shop local and to continue to support our local businesses. But we also want to thank the City of Norwalk for their ongoing support and commitment to the business community in Norwalk and to keep our businesses thriving and surviving during these difficult times. Thank you so much, and that ends my comments.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, that's, that's really educational. I mean, what a great investment that you make in your community when you shop locally. I mean, think that $68 out of $100 stays in the community. You know, you're just not buying things, but you're also, through that process, investing into the community. And I, you know, I think every time I turn around over the last month, there's Karen Spillsbury. If it's not breast cancer awareness, it's, you know, the, it's Shop Small Saturday and everything else. So I just want to thank you for all the work that you do. I know you're a very, very busy person, yeah, but we appreciate you, okay? We have Andy Yu.
I just wanted to speak on a couple of things that I noticed as I was looking over the City Council agenda minutes and available transparency and availability. So Planning Commission meetings, other commission meetings used to be on YouTube, they used to be broadcast, and that was saved. I noticed that stopped maybe like a year ago or something. You know, it's, there's a lot of meetings all the time, it's kind of hard to keep up with everything that's going on. Looking over the minutes afterwards, they're very bare bones, they're not very detailed, so it's kind of hard to tell like what goes on in those committees, if there's any public comments, or what those public comments even say. So it'd be helpful either have more detailed notes, so someone can actually make sense of those minutes and feel like they know what's going on in the city, or maybe start broadcasting them again, archiving that, so that way, you know, the residents that are busy, that have things to do at night, and maybe can't make all those committee meetings, can kind of see what's going on. Speaking on that, something I also noticed about the public comments when it comes to the City Council meetings, it's very limited in what is noted there. It does note who speaks, it notes, you know, the number of people that spoke, but it doesn't say what they said exactly. I know for the City Council comments, member comments, you'll have a nice little synopsis of what you mentioned, what you did, but there's nothing for the public comment, and I think that's important to have as well. I know there is the broadcasters YouTube, but if you're making minutes on what's going on in the meeting, why not just put in a, you know, synopsis or summary of what the public comments were as well, because I think that'd be very helpful. Public comments, while there is an email that is sent out that people can send written comments to if they're not able to go, it doesn't seem like those I ever like read out or, or mentioned much, and I know this for a fact because other residents who I have provided that to have said they have reached out, but I haven't heard one read here in at least two months, if not more than that. So I don't know if those aren't getting lost or what's going on with that, but that's also something else to look into. And then finally, something I've been speaking on all the other times I've been here regarding the immigration actions going on in the community and actions that the city can take, something that just recently happened this week, the LA County Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance that applies to unincorporated areas banning the use of face masks by police and requiring that they positively identify themselves if they're going to be arresting anybody. And that's something I think that the city can look into. I know you're able to ask your staff to look into and report back, so that's something that can be very easily done here to see if that's something that can work in Norwalk and at least get that conversation going. So these are just some things I've noticed, and hopefully you're able to take some of those suggestions into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I have a card here, and I apologize because I can't read the name, but it's regarding rights for small businesses. Okay, great. Okay, great.
About two weeks ago, ICE was roaming the City of Norwalk. They hit the Home Depot on Alondra four times in a day. They actually chased someone onto the Cerritos College campus, putting college students in direct danger. I know some of you are alumni of Cerritos College and have close ties to the school. There has been a call among the students to have Cerritos College designated as a sanctuary school. I just wanted to mention that since those students were not able to make it tonight to express the sentiment. That same day, a few of us canvassed some small businesses in the most vulnerable parts of Norwalk. We hit about 20 local businesses that day. We handed them resources like know your rights cards, whistles, and employee-only signs. Virtually every business that we talked to were very receptive to us. Now, we've been told that outreach has been made for small businesses in Norwalk, and it occurred to me to ask one of the business owners if anyone from the city has reached out to them. They told me that a city worker came out once in the last six months with no resources. All they did was express that what was happening with the ICE raids is a shame. They also went on to express that business has slowed down to, has slowed to levels similar to those during the pandemic, and that the crisis that's currently keeping folks from frequenting the business is actually worse because they are not getting any government assistance to keep them afloat this time. We are planning on canvassing more businesses in the future to inform them of their rights. We've tried to appeal to your humanity, hoping to get you on board with policies that surrounding cities have passed to help undocumented folks. I imagine that the, that the effect that this business owner is experiencing is prevalent among other small business owners. This crisis is affecting the local economy, and you'd think that would be obvious to everyone when you consider that these folks that are being abducted are contributors to the local economy. We've heard you time and again express how pro-business you are. I'm hoping this will get you to move, because I can't imagine that community members that are volunteering their time to check up, to check up on these small businesses when it's, when it's the city's responsibility looks good for you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, could I have Alicia Elias-Gamble come forward, please? Thank you.
My name is Alicia Elias-Gamble, and the topic I'm going to talk about tonight, why can't I park on the street where I live? Moved to Norwalk in 1997 into apartment building. Okay, thank you. I moved into an apartment building in Norwalk in 1997. I've lived in that same apartment building, believe it or not, for 28 years. And from 1997 to 2006, I had a garage and I parked my car in the garage, my, the garage in my apartment building. Because of, you know, finances, I got a roommate in 2006, and she had a car and I had a car. I had to move a lot of the things in the garage so that she could move into the apartment with me. So now we had two cars that had to, we had to park on the street, so we parked on the street from 2006 to 202022. In 202022, I got very sick, and I went to live with my daughter in Hollywood for six months, and when I came back, my neighbor said, you're not going to be able to park your car on our street, I'm living well anymore. And I said, why? And I said, well, because one of the neighbors on the street that lives in the house got permit parking. And I said, well, I know about permit parking. I lived in Norwalk for 25 years, I have neighbors all over. There's probably a reason why they wanted to restrict the parking to the people that live on that, you know, in our neighborhood. The neighbor that informed me said, well, and I said, well, how, how do you know that we can't park? I said, and they said, well, we heard, we heard through rumors, and then apparently the way it works in Norwalk is if something's happening in the neighborhood and you work in and you live in an apartment, you send a notice to our landlord or to our property manager. So unfortunately, our property manager was very elderly, and they were both getting very sick. They never notified the people. So through the rumors on the street, some of my neighbors came to one of these council meetings. It was the last council, last meeting where they were going to discuss the permits, and and they said, well, you're too late, we've had so many meetings talking about this. And long story short, everybody on the street got permits except the people in the apartment building. So I went to the highway when I got, well, I went to the highway, the safety patrol people because they're always wonderful in my neighborhood, and I said, I need to get permit, I need my permit, because I live on the street. And they said, no, you can't get permits because you're an apartment dweller. And I said, well, that doesn't make sense. I lived on the street for 25 fricking years, I've lived, parked my car, what do you mean? And he said, well, the law says you have to be a property owner. Where, I said, well, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. Let me see, wait, wait. Out of time.
You know what, ma'am, that's, that's end of your time, but Rita, would you speak to Alicia, please?
Yes. Very much appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? If not, this meeting's adjourned. Have a good night.